Would all candidates please go to the front, please? We need you up there. Assume the position. That's right. Hi, Mary. Everybody looks so dressed up and professional. Great. Saturday morning. Are we ready? Good morning. I just want to thank everybody for coming today. I am Susan Rosenberg. I am the president of the Richfield League of Women Voters, and we welcome you here for this Candidates Forum. I just have a few things that I need to go over, kind of explain the rules and the mission of the League of Women Voters. And then after I'm finished with introductions, I will have Superintendent Janowski come forward. He's going to talk about the levy. And then we are going to have, we're going to kind of veer a little bit away from the program and allow questions from the superintendent in regards to the levy after his presentation. So we'll have a short question and answer time for the superintendent before the Candidates Forum starts. But I'm just going to go over a little bit about the rules. And so it is the League of Women Voters' mission to promote citizen involvement in government and increase public understanding for major public policy issues. We believe that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective government. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan with respect to candidates and/or parties. We do study and take positions on issues. First of all, this forum is not a debate. Candidates will take turns in answering questions, first those prepared by the League of Women Voters, and then written questions from the audience. This forum is being taped for rebroadcast on cable TV so that the folks who miss it today will have a chance to see their candidates and kind of learn a little bit more about them. So please hold your applause to the end. And we would ask that no applause or outbursts from the audience will be allowed during this whole forum. If there is any outburst or any applause, then we will ask you to leave. They will be in order for speaking, and our two moderators have, they have, I guess they've drawn the numbers so they know where they're at, okay? And then they'll be in that order for answering questions. Each candidate's introductory remarks will be one minute. The league questions will be answered in one minute. And candidates will have 45 seconds to answer audience questions. And there will be people walking around with index cards. If in case a question pops into your head, I think there's, they will be walking around so that you can write them down and then give them back to the person who is walking around, and then they will give them to the moderators. One of our members is serving, we've got two timers. And they'll be holding up a warning sign for you candidates. And then also a stop sign. That means that your time is just about up. Candidates, not able to, there isn't any that, we didn't have a candidate, all candidates are here. If there was one that wasn't here, then they could have submitted a statement to be read by the moderator. Members of the audience are invited to submit questions, and I, we've already kind of gone over that. And I just want to make sure that the league, Erin and Sue, they do reserve the right to screen the questions. Our intention is, in good faith, to select questions that represent the interests expressed by the members of our audience and those who submit questions. And they will be looking at those so there won't be any duplicates and try to touch as many subjects as we can in the time that we have. Questions will not be asked if they are illegible, on personal matters, unclear, inappropriate, hostile, or antagonistic. We don't do that here in Richfield, do we? And they're submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gaining information. Questions on one issue with similar issues will be consolidated and rephrased, like I said before. And then all of the written questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. If a listener perceives that an issue is not adequately addressed, we urge that the listener contact the candidate directly. And I will ask that the candidates kind of hang around a little bit afterwards because there could be a time, so you take a little time so that if anybody has any extra questions or wants some further information than they got up here, that they can pick that up from you. There is some campaign literature out in the hallway. And it's another thing I ask everybody, please turn off your cellphone. This is important so that there's important message, information being given here, and we need that. So with that, I am going to now introduce our superintendent, Superintendent Janowski, and he's going to talk a little bit about the levy. And if you have questions for him, write them down. I know we've got some people walking around with index cards, and he will take a few minutes. I'm not sure of the time that we're going to allow for this. I don't know, 10 minutes, 15 for this? I don't know if we've said. But, so you can get some information that you're, that maybe he didn't give in the presentation. So anyway, with that, Superintendent, if you'd like to come forward and talk about the referendum.
Alright, so thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to share information about our Richfield Public School referendum. I'd also like to welcome our five candidates for school board. And on behalf of Richfield Public Schools, we wish you the best and look forward to an ongoing, strong working relationship. So good luck to our candidates today. On behalf of Richfield Public Schools, I'm here to present a conversation around our 2017 referendum. Reinvest in Richfield as we inspire and empower our students to learn, grow, and excel. A conversation about Richfield Public Schools wouldn't be complete without a little conversation about some of the things and some of the highlights happening within our schools. You may have read in the Star Tribune or in the Sun Current that we've been seeing some significant gains in our graduation rate and also within our test scores. So over the last several years, our graduation rate jumped 5.5% in the most recent year, one of the highest growth jumps in the entire metro area. We've also seen some of the highest MCA state standards-based test growth in the entire state of Minnesota with double-digit gains in both reading and mathematics at the high school level as we continue to move our students to their futures and beyond. We also work very hard within Richfield Public Schools to achieve our strategic plan. And our strategic plan has us wanting to be a competitive educational experience where all belong and we offer opportunities for all of our students. And to that end, we work very hard and very aggressively to pursue funding and supports for our students, funding that goes outside of Richfield and on to other opportunities. So things like voluntary pre-K where we've been able to gain funding from the state to expand our four-year-old and three-year-old programming. And over the last two years, we've provided over 300 classroom seats for four-year-olds. And we are one of the large pre-Ks within the metro area with 164-year-old seats in this current year. Similarly, we worked with the state for math and reading supports, pursuing grant funding through a program called ADSIS which provides intervention teachers in reading and math in all of our schools, something that extends well beyond Richfield and into the state to support our students. And then finally, we also work with private partnerships, having recently launched our Richfield Health Center which provides free health care to all individuals living within Richfield from birth to the age of 21, where the architecture, the medical care, and all of the coverage has been provided free of charge to Richfield and the people of Richfield through our partnership with Park Nicollet to expand health to all of our students and all of our families. On the ballot in this coming November, we have two questions. And two questions that are not connected. One is around operations and one is around capital and facilities. An operational levy are the funds that we use to support our classrooms, to support our teachers, and to support our students. They're dollars that go directly to our students, and they're dollars that are used for teachers specifically. As we look to compare ourselves with our neighboring districts, in the most close surrounding areas, we are currently behind on a per pupil-per-student basis between $450 and $1,100 behind our neighboring districts. So what that has meant is that over the last several years, we've made over $4 million in reductions because we just don't have the same level of financial stability that some of our surrounding areas and some of our surrounding districts have. With the operational funds, and it's important to have a basic understanding of funding within the state of Minnesota, there's a multitude of pots of money, and they're all designed for certain circumstances and for certain needs. There are two pots of money specifically, and two pots alone that go to every single student that are designed to support every single student within the district. One is called the general fund. Slightly over $6,000 per student. It's to every student in the entire state of Minnesota. The only other pot that's specifically designed to support all of the students in a district are operational levy funds. So the two pots of money that we're talking about when we talk about some of the things like licensed teachers to maintain or reduce class sizes are general fund dollars equal in every single district and referendum operational levy dollars, which are different in every single district. So one of the things that we would be doing in this conversation around operational levy funds is looking to add licensed classroom teachers to maintain or reduce class sizes. How did we come up with some of the priorities that we came up with? We actually conducted a survey, a phone survey of approximately 700 people, I'm sorry, 600 people with, living within the city of Richfield, a conversation on what are your top priorities? What are the things that if we were to have funds in Richfield Public Schools, you'd want us to utilize those funds for? The top response had to do with class sizes, classroom teachers, and making sure that we pay attention to those specific areas. Additional areas that people wanted us to focus on is adding additional teachers for high-quality differentiated support in reading and math, making sure that all of our students are accelerated to grade level, and also making sure that those who are at grade level are accelerated above grade level, making sure that we meet every single student exactly where they're at. That would allow us to also expand course offerings at middle and high school, including some of the high school courses earning college credit. One of the things that's different in schools nowadays is that our students are able to achieve college credit at the same time as they achieve high school credit at no cost to the taxpayer and no cost to the school district. We do those by providing college and the schools classes, advanced placement classes, and other options like PSEO where students gain college credit at the same time as they're gaining their high school credit. Similarly, we also need to make sure, as we've had reductions over the past several years, that we find long-term financial stability to make sure that we can reduce the impact of possible future reductions. So on the ballot, you will see, and a couple of years ago, we had a conversation with the taxpayers about a renewal with a small inflationary increase of a levy. This would be a proposed revoke of that levy, which is currently, or for the next school year would be $964.60, replacing that with a $1,414.60, keeping in line with neighboring districts. That 1,414 would put us at the bottom of our surrounding neighborhoods, put us in a category to be able to compete with those classroom dollars that are spent on every single student to maintain and reduce class sizes and also provide those additional supports. From an impact perspective, that would be $7.67 monthly on an average Richfield home, which is currently priced at $210,000. The second question you're going to find on the ballot is in regard to a capital levy. Capital levy dollars are solely allowed to be used for building-based improvements, building maintenance, safety and security, and things of a similar nature. Now, it's important to note that Richfield buildings were built in the 1950s and 1960s. We're very thankful within Richfield Public Schools that back in those days, the community did an exceptionally, an exceptionally effective job at building the Richfield Public Schools buildings. So when we conducted over the past year a capital facility study to examine the needs of our buildings and determine what were the shape of our buildings, we found that the structures, the skeletons, the frames of our buildings were built in a high-quality way. And so we aren't in a position as a district that we need to replace any buildings or build any new buildings. We found through the capital facility study that we needed some additional attention to our buildings. Back in 1993 was the last conversation about a capital facility maintenance bond. And so those renovations were completed in 1995. And so that conversation with taxpayers hasn't happened since 1995. Due to that, obviously that's 22 years ago, our buildings are in need of significant deferred maintenance update to renew that investment that our Richfield community made in the 1950s and 1960s. We also find that in the current day, safety and security and traffic flow improvements are needed to support our students and staff, to make sure that our buildings are designed to keep our students safe, and also to support the traffic flow that again is very different than it was 25 years ago. Then we also have had some changes in education. And so looking at our educational space to make sure it's optimized with up-to-date science labs and common areas to support the collaboration between students and teachers that happens today and to improve our student learning across the district. And so again, Richfield has not had a specific capital bond referendum since the mid-1990s. In a conversation where I was asked, what is actually a bond referendum? It's very much like looking at a home equity loan. As you think about what you do with your own home and how you facilitate the improvements or the maintenance of your home, sometimes people have an equity loan which they then pay over a course of years. Looking at our buildings, this would be similar. The second question, the capital facility bond question, would allow Richfield Public Schools to sell bonds over 25 years to make significant improvements within our buildings. Over that past year, we had a capital facility study coming to about $165 million in needs. Now, our current board looked at that number and wanted us to really evaluate every single piece, every single item, and try to narrow down from a needs and wants perspective to an overall very clear needs. What exactly do we need and how do we reduce that request? And that led to an $86.8 million, million-dollar bond question. The board also wants us to be very clear and transparent with communication. And so they also want us to reiterate that there is a small amount of dollars, $32.5 million over that same period of time, that's called Board Authority. Board Authority authorizes the school board to address funds that are required for things like HVAC and having effective heating, having effective plumbing, and things behind the walls. And Board Authority dollars are not allowing for things outside of the walls. So the Board Authority dollars do not allow fixing a roof, tuck pointing brick, any form of upgrade or renovations. Those dollars allow for effective air quality and effective water quality within schools. So if that second question were to pass, that proposed increase would request $13.58 monthly on an average Richfield $210,000 home. Specific to the ballot, and the ballot is already prepared, as you hopefully already know, early voting. It's called No Excuses Voting. It's available at City Hall from 8:00 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. We're asking the members of the Richfield community to increase the operating levy by $450 per student. That would include a reveal-revoke or repeal-revoke of the $964.60 levy, replacing it with a 1,414.60 levy. We'll also say very clearly on the ballot, approval of this question would increase property taxes. And so that is also part of the state statute to make sure that there is no confusion in communication with our voters. And then question two, which is a capital bond levy question, is asking specifically for the ability to sell 86.8 million in bonds to support facility maintenance and improvements. That would happen over 25 years. And similarly, as we did our survey of 600 Richfield community members, we found that some of the top priorities were deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance basically means the long-term upkeep of buildings and the long-term investment in buildings that there isn't currently funding for. Similarly, to increase and improve safety, security, and traffic flow along with supporting improvements in educational spaces, science labs, and common areas. So one of the questions, and I'll be opening it up for questions in a second, is how did we come up with some of the top priorities? And very simply, with our survey to our community and with some of the engagement conversations we've had with our finance committee and other committees, these were the areas identified by the community of Richfield as the top priorities from a front funding perspective. So with that, I will turn it back to the League of Women Voters and see if there are questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Janowski. We have two questions we've received. The first one is, how can residents and taxpayers see the ways in which these increased funds would be used, both on the front end before the vote and during the term of the levy bond if approved?
So there are several ways. One, richfieldschools.org, and I believe it's backslash vote. But on richfieldschools.org website, we have all the detail of our facility study, of our approval from the state of Minnesota for the areas that would be worked on from a capital facility perspective. And then we also have the written descriptions of each of these particular areas for people to look at in depth. We're holding multiple conversations. My contact information is given directly. So for people with specific questions, I'm also happy to answer any of those questions. And then in the current board packet, which there'll be a board meeting on Monday, October 2nd, there's an additional in-depth approval. It's called Review and Comment from the Commissioner of Education, has a spreadsheet that really gets further down into detail on some of the specific areas and each of the specific areas of funding that we'll focus on with the funds were they to be approved.
Thank you. A second question, what are the implications for our schools and community if either or both of these referendum questions do not pass?
So I'll separate those out into two areas. From an operational perspective, currently several of our surrounding districts are looking for a significant increase in their operating referendum at this time. So as we think about our strategic plan of remaining competitive, one of the top priorities has to do with maintaining or reducing class sizes. It's also frequent, the most frequent calls that we get within the schools are concerns in regard to class sizes. It's going to be very hard for us overall to continue to compete from a class size perspective, currently sitting between $450 and $1,100 behind per-student class size funds. But with the asks of our surrounding areas, it will be even further, further challenging to compete from that overall class size perspective and address the concerns of our constituencies. Similarly, as you look at funding across the state of Minnesota, funding doesn't necessarily keep pace with inflation. And so there are estimates, and the state budget office, I believe, has said that over the last 10 years or so, state funding on the per-student basis hasn't kept pace with inflation to about $600 per student. And so it would again continue to likely impact long-term financial stability, long-term cuts in our ability to compete from an overall class size and offering perspective. From a capital facility perspective, many of you have been in our buildings. You've seen the current updated needs of our buildings to keep pace with overall long-term facility maintenance. Obviously, many of us own homes, and very few of us, I would suggest, have done no improvements, no replacements to our homes over the past 25 years. And so if the capital levy was not to be approved, or the capital bond referendum was not to be approved, we would be sitting with our buildings with obviously that significant need, that significant long-term maintenance, and that would obviously continue on without the improvements being made. And we just have to move forward with where we are.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now go to the forum for our candidates. Just one clarification, each of, each of the candidates present drew a number out of a, out of a bag. And that number represents where they are sitting from left to right, one through five. Our first questions will actually go one through five, and these will be the questions we're asking them to speak to, just to inform us about whatever they want to tell us about. And those questions are a minute each. And then after that, we have a random number generator. So if it seems like we're skipping around, we are. It's based on a random table that allows us to not have every person answer the same question in the same order each time, trying to be fair. So we will start with Mary Barnes. Yeah, is the button pushed? Is it, do you have a little green light on your speaker? Okay.
John and I have been married for 45 years. We have two daughters, both Richfield grads. And I have a nine-year-old granddaughter that attends Sheridan Elementary. I love to read. I volunteer at the Minnesota Veterans Home for the last seven years. I am probably the only candidate that has a submarine in her driveway. You may have seen it in the Richfield Fourth of July Parade. John, who's in the audience, he got out of bed, served on the USS Hardhead, so I am very proud to be...
All right. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
Christine Malik?
I started my relationship with Richfield Public Schools in 2005 as a fun fair volunteer and then became very involved in PTO work. And I joined the Financial Planning Advisory Committee when my kids were a little older and the in-classroom opportunities became less available. I was also chair of the Richfield CQC, and in 2014, I was elected to the school board. I have really enjoyed my past four years on the board. I think one of our biggest accomplishments as a team and with the community was building our mission statement and the supporting strategic plan. I think that was the key to a lot of our accomplishments and guiding our work in the past four years, and I think guiding our work in the years to come. And it also provides an opportunity for us to be held accountable, and I would like to continue that work.
Thank you. Peter Tensing?
Fixure in keeping candidates and voters informed, and we really appreciate the work that you do. I'm running for my third term on the board. I was first elected in 2007 and then reelected for a second term in 2013. My priorities are really quite similar to the priorities that I've always had. I believe very strongly that we have outstanding opportunities for children in our district. I have four children and have, at one time or another, they've been in all of the schools, sort of across the district. And having lived in Richfield for 20 years, I've been involved with the schools since 2004, both as a board member and through advisory committees. What's most important to me is to extend the opportunities that are available to many of our students to all of our students. And I think we do that by building a culture that puts students first and values accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Paulus?
Hi, thanks to the league and to everyone for coming today. My name's Tim Paulus. I've lived in Richfield since 2001. At some point in the middle, I moved a whole mile west and, but stayed in Richfield. So I moved from about Nicollet to a little bit west of Lyndale. I've been active in the community in a number of ways, mostly through youth sports. I have two kids, one who graduated last year from Richfield High and another who is now at the middle school and has moved from Sheridan Hills to the middle school. You know, I've been active a little in the schools prior to my, this is, I'm running for reelection. The last four years have been great and a wonderful experience of learning and trying to deliver some of the parent view or some of the experiences that parents within the buildings were having within the district to make sure that those needs were being addressed or heard. I'd like to continue that work, and I hope to meet many of you and hear your questions as time, as we move on. Thanks.
Thank you. Nathan Polk?
Good morning. Again, thank you for hosting this forum for all of us to get together today. A little bit about myself, I'm pleased to say that I was raised right here in Richfield. I attended all the Richfield Public Schools K through 12. Now I'm also a homeowner in Richfield, this wonderful community. Last year during the 2016-17 school year, I worked at Richfield High School. I was also a volunteer football coach for our football team and was also the 10th grade JV girls' basketball coach. So I spent a lot of time involved with our youth and our students at our high school. Prior to that, I worked as a police officer for five... Prior to that, I worked as a police officer for five years in La Crosse, Wisconsin. During that time, I've just learned that we need a lot of mentors and role models for the youth, people that they can relate to, people that they can trust, people that they feel comfortable coming to with their issues. I want to be that. I want to be the voice for those students and for the staff here.
Thank you, Mr. Polk.
Thank you.
Our first question then is, why are you running for the Board of Education? And what are the motivating factors in your decision to become a candidate? And Mr. Polk, you're on again.
I'm a big proponent for both our youth and for our educators. Our world is facing huge challenges, as we all know. And we need to prepare these students and our youth for those challenges as they move forward in this world. And I think that this starts in our classroom. Having teachers, having staff and educators there to show them the way, to lead by example, and to give them that knowledge that they need moving forward. I believe that our teachers are the backbone to our community, and I think that we need to fully back them, appreciate them and support them. That's a big reason why I wanted to run for school board this year. As, as I previously stated, I, I worked at the schools last year, got to see firsthand the operating procedures as far as what goes on in the schools. Frustrating at times, there's a lot of good things going on, and I want to be a proponent and someone to help move us forward, to continue to be competitive throughout this community.
Thank you. The next person is Christine Malak.
I kind of covered this in my introduction. Really, I, I feel like the community came together to build this strategic plan for where Richfield Public Schools wants to go. I think it's important to honor that, and I am really interested in continuing that work, providing policies, policies and vision to follow that strategic plan, to meet the needs of all of the kids in the Richfield Public Schools district. I feel like I ask a lot of questions in meetings. I spend, I'm very committed, I spend a lot of time reviewing the packet and the information that comes to us in advance, and I work hard to hold the administration and all of the board together as a team accountable, accountable for our work and for doing the work to move the strategic plan forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tensing.
Thank you. My top priority and the thing that motivates me to run, again, it's the same that it has been for some time, and that is to expand upon the excellence that already exists within our schools. It's, it's been my experience as a parent within our schools, and my children have received an outstanding education and had outstanding experiences a lot of the time. But at the same time, I recognize that we don't always deliver that same experience consistently to all of our students. And I have been motivated for the last 10 years to work with the schools, to see us transform our practices and transform our policies so that we're more consistent with delivering the same level of opportunity to all of our students.
Thank you. And Ms. Barnes?
Well, I've been attending the school board meetings the last couple of meetings, and I have to say I'm really impressed with our school board. And if I'm not elected, I would be so honored for them to remain on the school board. But I am running because I have a nine-year-old granddaughter who, you know, will someday graduate from Richfield High School, heaven forbid, if she's not arrested by the police before then. But anyway, I have always been a cheerleader for Richfield. I have come against a lot of people that have criticized our schools, and I've always said, "Richfield has the best schools ever." Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Paulus.
So just to continue, you know, I ran four years ago in the hope to increase dialogue and understanding of concerns of parents within the district. Something had popped up that made me believe that the existing board was not as, as attuned to the concerns and needs of the parents. In the ensuing four years, I've tried to be someone who is communicative and, and responsive, and even if those conversations are difficult and not delivering exactly what someone needs, but just to let people know that they have been heard and that their, their needs are being met. All that is wrapped within a need to have a plan and to implement a plan and to communicate that plan. And so we've done some good things on having a strategic plan and executing it, and I'd like to continue that work, including the important part, which is communicating it and having, having a good feedback loop so that people can know that they are heard and how it works within the plan we have. I'm someone who, who definitely wants to keep improving. I don't have a sense of complacency. I'm very proud of the good things we've done and the improvements we've made, but I know that there's, is more to do.
Thank you. The next question, in your judgment, what aspects of your background and experience would contribute most to your effectiveness as a board member? And the first person to answer this question is Ms. Malak.
Thank you. I would say, the four years of experience, I think, goes a long way, serving as vice-chair and chair on the school board to fulfill some of the qualifications. Also, I've really taken advantage of the Minnesota School Board Association's training opportunities. I've done a total in the past four years of 87 hours of MSBA training, including leadership conference, an officer's workshop before I was the chair, superintendent evaluation workshop, and some culturally, culturally responsive leadership training. More personally, I have a lot of passion for the work. It comes from some of my experiences volunteering in the classroom. Everything from art masterpiece to guided reading in, in my daughter's fourth grade class. I've spent time in the classrooms, also in my work in medical laboratory sciences. I've done some high school outreach and spent a full day with biology students in the high school, and it kind of gave me a vision on what the school day is like for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
My professional background, I was a credit manager for over 21 years. I worked for First American Title, also worked at a law firm. I also have volunteered at Sheridan Elementary. And so I guess like, my passion is probably children, the elderly, and I just have a great passion for children. Thank you.
And Mr. Polk.
Can you repeat the question one time?
Sure. In your judgment, what aspects of your background and experience would contribute most to your effectiveness as a board member?
I think what will help me through the board is just, I guess, the direct workings within the school district. As I've stated before, I worked in the school district last year. I have family, I have friends that work in the district as well. A lot of people that have been coming forward to me, that want to utilize me to voice their concerns and their opinions. So I believe just already being in tune with the community, the students as well as the faculty will really help. And just in itself, having a passion for Richfield. I genuinely want Richfield, whether it's the schools, the police department, the fire department, our city hall, to strive. I want us to be competitive, and I want us to be the best that we can. And I think just having that strong passion for the city itself, for us to overcome barriers and to continue to prosper is, is something that I'm going to bring with me.
Thank you. Mr. Paulus?
Um, you know, so by, by quirk of genetics or whatever, I'm a math person by training. I studied math for a long time, and how that translates to what I do is I'm very analytical in how I look at things. I try to be driven by, by logic and, and the rules around things. Through a few other experiences, I've, I've had the good fortune to, to have been a teacher. I taught high school for one year, and I taught math at the college level for six years while I was in graduate school. I work in a consulting role, and, and I've, I've done a lot of coaching. So communication is what comes out of, out of all of those, an ability to relate to people, address their needs, hear what they have, and try to get them in the direction that we, that we need to get going, or to just listen and, and address it if we aren't getting in the direction that they would like to go. You know, I have a natural sense of curiosity, and I, and I can be a world-class cynic. So I, I'm willing and able to ask a lot of questions of anyone, and, and, and I can smell a bad answer from a mile away usually. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tensing.
So my professional background, I am a physician, and really that experience is probably the defining experience for me in terms of the, the way that I approach problems. I am trained to analyze problems through both a combination of subjective and objective data gathering, and I'm also trained to, when you're developing a solution, to filter that solution through your values and through the values of the person that you're serving. As a physician, it would be my patient. As a school board member, it would be our students and our constituents. I believe that our board has done an outstanding job over the last four years of, I think we have complimented each other nicely, Mr. Paulus's cynicism and analytics, and Ms. Malak brings a lot of compassion. My, my role has been to try to balance the objective and subjective assessment and filter that through the strong values that we possess. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, as a school board member, what would be your major priorities? And the first one on this one is Mr. Tensing.
So we, I have a couple of big priorities. The top priority that I have is accountable and transparent leadership, and I'm quite proud of the work that we've done over the last four years. We have brought a new level of accountability to our work with the superintendent. Superintendent Janowski has been very receptive to participating with the board in role modeling what transparent leadership looks like. And I think that the board is making strides in that direction. We're not satisfied. We have more work to do, and I would like to continue that work on building accountability and transparency within our organization, our organization. The other thing that is really important to me is that we have a culture that puts students first, and a culture that is easy to navigate, where we don't depend just upon parental advocacy to see things get done for our kids, but where we have an organization that proactively works to identify students' needs and anticipate them and meet them.
Thank you. Mr. Paulus?
For priorities, I think one of the, the main areas of improvement for our district is broadly in communication, the ability to communicate what we're doing and why we're doing it. Pretty much all of the concerns or issues raised by parents and community members breaks down to a lack of communication. And that comes from, from all levels. It's, it comes from the board and it comes from all the way down. As Peter had mentioned, transparency and continuing that, and that is a, a big part of the communication. In terms of, you know, we, we have a strategic plan, I'd like to see it executed and completed. And, and within that includes advancement in learning for all our learners, and pushing all of them to achieve at the highest levels that they can. You know, the, the main goal would be that we become the active choice of all, all the parents in the district who want to send their kids to schools. We become an active and not a passive choice for where they, where they send their kids.
Thank you. Mr. Polk.
I think one of my main priorities... Are receiving. So with that, furthermore, I want to really push for creating a more diverse district, whether that's in the staff, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers to the coaches. I think with our demographic of our city and our student base, our educational system should be very similar to that of the students that we have, and it's not. So my main priority would be just that, to gather that voice, to listen to those families that feel that they're not getting the same quality education and be that voice for them.
Thank you, Mr. Polk. Ms. Malak.
Thank you. I think my, one of my main priorities is really meeting the needs of all of the students of Richfield, in the place that they come into the district, where they come into the district, where they are, no matter where they are when they start in, meeting their needs from that point on, and looking at beyond just the classroom needs, but the, the social emotional needs that all of these kids come into our district with. I would also say that the continuation of transparency and the work that we do financially and the things that are happening in the district is also a priority, as has already been mentioned. And I do think a lot of these things are based in our communication. So that has been one of our goals in the past couple of years. Everything from communication about the equity work that we're doing, the seven-period day and how that helps all of the students at Richfield High School, communication about where we are in the district and what our work is, and how, how we are meeting the needs of all students.
Thank you. And Ms. Barnes?
I think my number one priority would be keeping our students in our public schools. I think we need to figure out a way to keep our families engaged so that they don't leave our public schools. I think that is a pretty big issue in the district. My other issue would be classroom sizes. I spoke with the superintendent, and I think they're working on that very hard. I also had a great experience in the lunchroom at the high school with 530 students being fed in 20 minutes. That's a lot of students to be eating in 20 minutes. So that would be another issue of how we can maybe not have so many kids eating at the same time.
Thank you. Our next question is, looking ahead, what do you see as the school district's major challenges and opportunities? And Mr. Paulus, you are first on this one.
Sure. I, I think the, I'd alluded to this a moment ago, that communication is one of our biggest challenges. Communication is, is hard in general for any organization, and we, we have stumbled with it at times. And so, as a, you know, it's a challenge to have, to convince people who've been very good professionally at what they do. Our, our educators and the people in our district are wonderful at what they do, and that's, and their primary focus is educating kids or being part of the educational process. And to, to develop a mindset that their communications are matter and the clarity of them to a different audience than what they really were trained in would be something that, that would be worthwhile to, to pursue. And, and it's a mindset change, and change is difficult. We've, we've seen that in the last couple of years, if change of any kind is difficult to get your arms around. In terms of, you know, all the, that, that challenge also creates opportunity. If we can be successful at it, we will, we will match, I'm sorry, we will meet our expectations or our hopes, that we can, as I've said before, become an active and not a passive choice, both for attracting people who are currently leaving our district, but for those who are within it now to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Tensing.
So obviously, challenges and opportunities are pretty much always the, two sides of the same coin. I see our greatest opportunity as leveraging the diversity within our district to really make that an asset, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done, I think, over the last decade in shifting our mindset within Richfield Public Schools to, to realize that diversity is not a challenge, but diversity is an asset. And we, I think we are celebrating the diversity of our students. We have more work to do to leverage that diversity into, turn it into the, really the strength that it can be. The challenge, I believe, that is inherent within that work is that what we really need to do is we, we need to align our efforts consistently across all of our staff so that we can all be on the same page in terms of the way that we work to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
I think all school districts are facing many challenges, ours maybe more than others because of our diversity. I think we need to maybe try to employ more diverse employees within the district. I think, right now, I think we're at 8%, where our diversity in our students is much higher than that. I think it's going to be a challenge for a long time for many districts, and hopefully as a city and as, as a community, we can all work together and communicate. Thank you.
Ms. Malak?
So I think the financial challenges are pretty obvious when you look at the money that we're asking for to pass this levy, both of these levies. I think that is a challenge for... for all public schools right now. And I'm hoping that with the passing, if these levies pass, that we will really be able to take care of some of that work. I also agree with communication. I think our district is doing a lot of great things, and most districts right now are judged based basically on test scores. And I would like to see some more communication and more work on communicating the things that make a district great beyond just looking at the test scores. I also have a pretty positive outlook, and I think we've had a lot of community input on equity in our district recently. And I think the positive side of that is it has really allowed our students to have a voice. And we have, I think, capitalized that on our work with Reimagine Minnesota and bringing our student voice at the high school and the middle school into that work. Thank you.
Mr. Polk?
I think some of our big challenges right now, as Ms. Malick stated, is that we're too, we want too many quantitative measures, okay? Our graduation rate is going up 5%. We need this amount of money. I think we really need to start looking at it qualitatively, like what are we doing to benefit from those things? What are we doing that increase the 5% graduation rate? What kind of things are we doing that other districts aren't doing? Or what are other districts doing that we're not doing? You know, quite frankly, I don't like statistics. I don't like to play with those numbers because those can be so easily manipulated if you're not going to ask the questions as to how you got those numbers. So I think that the opportunity that we have is that there's people that are open-minded and willing to ask those tough questions, are open and willing to challenge that status quo rather than just be open and just take for granted what we're hearing. Those tough questions need to be asked, and they need to be answered, and I think all the citizens deserve to know those answers, yeah.
Thank you. Fifth question from the league. Are you in favor of the proposed referendum questions and increase in operating levy and capital bond money, which will be voted on in this, on this November? Why or why not? And the first one is Ms. Malick.
I am definitely in favor of both the operating and the capital levy. I've spent time in the buildings, and I know that they are structurally sound, but there's a lot of work and improvements that are needed to provide a good environment for our students to learn. Some of these things that are covered in that levy are things that we are legally required to do, like HVAC systems, things that aren't fun and exciting, but that need to be done. The operating levy, again, multiple districts around us are going out for similar operating levies, but they are increasing by quite a bit. If we do not pass this operating levy, we will be receiving approximately half of what some districts are receiving for operating. And I think we need to get our class sizes down, and this is the main way to do that. We've really been working with barely inflationary increases over the past few years, and so our class sizes have slowly creeped up, and I think that that's one of the main reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Polk?
I'm definitely in favor of the capital levy. I think our facilities definitely are in need of an upgrade. Our technology, our security measures that we have in place are not up to par, and that's just from firsthand experience. So I would definitely be a proponent to better equip those facilities with the much-needed technology, safety, and security-type items. The operating levy, I'm in favor of as well, as long as that money is being utilized, spent, and directed in the areas that it's stated that it's going to be used. If that money then is going to be used to lower the class sizes, to hire more teachers, things of that sort, I'm definitely a proponent of that. But I think that that might not always be the case. I think there's teachers that have been cut in this district in the last year that have lowered that ratio. We have schools that don't have paraprofessionals. We have Title I schools that don't have one Title I teacher. So as long as the money is being utilized where it's said it's going to be utilized, I'm absolutely for it.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
I have actually already voted because I won't be here for the election, and I definitely support both referendums. And I have always voted yes. I'm now considered a senior citizen, but I still vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
I am in support of both levies. I recognize, you know, having been on the board, that set the amount of the ask, I recognize and respect that it is a significant ask of the community, and it was arrived at thoughtfully. It is our burden as a district to communicate how it will be used and to follow through on it, as Nathan said, the delivery of the accountability. And I believe that it will be. For better or worse, we are in a competitive industry. Most people don't view public institutions, you know, we are a governmental agency. Most people do not view those as competitive industries. For example, you can't have Bloomington plow your street, or a Dyna PD show up if you have an issue. However, through the magic of open enrollment, we are in a competitive industry for the families within our community, and they have options, and they will exercise those options. We are not at the stage competing at the operational level with our neighbors, and those are the neighbors where we probably lose most of our open enrollees. And so we either have to decide to compete as a community, or we'll find out that public education is actually really expensive, weirdly, by saving some money.
Thank you. And Mr. Tensing?
I also support both referenda. My support is derived, really, coming at the end of this one, I'm going to be echoing a lot of statements that have already been made, but I support the referenda for several reasons. First of all, we arrived at the numbers through what I believe to be a very robust and transparent process. This has been a process several years in the making to complete the study of our facilities and also to form the priorities on how we're going to address the needs that were met. It is clear that we have work to do to bring our facilities into the 21st century, and I think now is the time to do that. Reinvesting in these schools, I think, is a responsibility that we have as citizens of this community. I strongly support the operational levy as well. Nathan is absolutely correct in stating that the direction of those dollars is dependent upon the good faith of future boards, and I would commit to directing them as we've stated.
Thank you. Now we have the section with questions from the audience, and these are limited to 45 seconds. First one is, tell me what you would like to see the school district do to better market themselves in order to retain students. And first one on this one is Mr. Polis.
That's a great question. I think, you know, we have improved in some ways already. We started marketing better. Our kindergarten roundup materials have been improved. I think one of the areas to improve is really broad communication of what our programs are at each of the different buildings. One of the biggest leaks we have in terms of retaining students is when students go from fifth grade to middle school and from eighth grade to high school. And so if we can improve our marketing and sharing of what our programs actually are, instead of leaving it to a whisper or rumor campaign of what we are and aren't, we will do well.
Thank you. Mr. Polk?
Sure. I think the best way to market Richfield is to just have a superior product. I think if we were excelling, prospering, and delivering what some of our promises are, that'd be the best way to market. The students that may leave to go to Holy Angels, Edina, Bloomington may stay. There's a specific reason or reasons that the residents in Richfield may send their students elsewhere. So to fix that problem and to present a superior product, and that product being service and educational experience, will market itself, I believe. So I believe once we create a beautiful experience for these students, all of that will take care of itself.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
So I think that it's really important for us to be able to share all of the things that make Richfield Public Schools great. And it could be small things in individual buildings or big things overall, like graduation rate. I think we do have a good product. I do think there is work to be done, but I do think the work that is happening in Richfield Public Schools is great. But I don't think people just inherently know, and I think we do need to do the work of communicating this information out. I did a training thing with MSBA that talked about having a dashboard, which is kind of like different things that you choose that you think make the district great or good information that needs to get out, and then sharing that information with the community and the parents of Richfield Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Tensing?
So, marketing is a piece of what we need to do, which is simply boiling down to communicating the good work that is done and communicating it effectively. I think we've made some good improvements in terms of sort of leveraging digital technology and to put that message out and to let our community be aware of the good work that we're doing. It is also certainly true that our strongest effort to recruit and retain students will come with the work that we do on the ground. So if we're not succeeding at delivering on the promises that we make regarding providing a high-quality education to all of our kids, then our marketing will be hollow. And so I think that our critical, the critical piece to building our enrollment is to make sure that we're succeeding on delivering.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
I don't know how many people in the community actually read the Richfield Schools newsletter when it comes out. I do. I think that is very impressive, and I think the district has done a great job with the newsletter, and I think that is a great way of communicating with the community. And if we can just express that message within that newsletter, I think that would be great.
Thank you. Next question, how will we continue to close the achievement gap? And the first one on that is Mr. Polk.
I think the way to combat the achievement gap is to keep your children engaged, to keep them wanting more. And I think that derives from having staff members that are relatable, retainable, and people that the students just genuinely have that relationship with. I think the core issue there would just be having our staff continue to develop those positive relationships and continue to grow and work with those students. Equity and equality are definitely issues, you know, nationwide in education. And I think there's a way that we need to bring well-qualified, diverse staff members to Richfield Public Schools.
Thank you. And Ms. Malick?
I would echo something that Pete mentioned earlier about in our education, making sure that the opportunities that are available are available to all of our students. I think one of the things that we have succeeded in that was with the seven-period day. We used to have a zero hour, and the only students that were able to take advantage of that opportunity were kids that could get to school early, like a parent that could drop them off. So making the seven-period day available so that all students have that option available, and there isn't just an option available only for kids that have that extra opportunity, is really important. So I think looking at all of the work that we do through that same equity lens, and when we're making policies and decisions, making sure that we are making these opportunities available to all.
Mr. Tensing?
We're going to close the achievement gap primarily by focusing on aligning our efforts so that all of our staff have the interest of each student at the forefront. We need, all of our staff need to be intentionally differentiating the education that they bring to their students to make sure that they are tailoring that product to each individual student's needs. We need to, we do need to increase the diversity that is visible at all levels of our organization. And at the same time that we have that challenge, every other district in the metro has that challenge. And so the way that we're going to accomplish that is by growing our own. We're probably not going to draw them from elsewhere, but we need to grow our own diverse staff here in Richfield.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Well, I agree with everybody's statements. I think what we also need to bring into the picture is educating the parents and getting the parents involved. I think that's probably the number-one priority. I was a really mean mom when my kids went to Richfield, and we have so much diversity in our community, and we need to engage those parents to learn how to be good parents and how to help their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
Thanks. I think we've actually enacted some things to address it, and time will tell if they're successful. For example, we've worked hard to gather funding for our pre-K program, you know, which suggests an earlier intervention. We've worked hard to gather funds for the AdSIS program, which provides supports for students who might be in the middle of achievement and to boost them along the way. We've increased opportunities for inclusivity of certain programs to allow people to reach for harder academic challenges than historically maybe they've been volunteering for or encouraged to with supports through the high school seven-period day. And so when you take that with the programs we have for equity to increase within our staff and awareness of the diverse learners we have, I think that is a pathway that we're on, and I would like to see that unfold.
Thank you. Next question, given the climate of distrust of the administration from the end of last school year's events, what would you do to gain that trust back? And Ms. Barnes?
Well, number one, I don't, political statements don't belong in the schools, and I think that's probably what you are mentioning. As far as getting the trust back, I don't know that most of the community lost trust in the schools, and that's only just from what I've seen.
Okay. Mr. Tensing?
I think that the way we're going to gain the trust of the community is by continuing the good work that we've been doing. We have, I mean, it's apparent that the questionnaire is referring to the controversy that sort of unfolded over the spring and summer. And the response, I think, of our board and our administration has been to listen, has been to gather information, and has been to proactively work to put in place efforts to make sure that all the voices that need to be heard are able to speak honestly and respectfully, and that we are able to listen to each other.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
Just to echo some of what Peter was getting at, I believe, you know, the willingness to communicate and listen. There were a number of community members I've reached out to and had conversations with, and people were frankly angry. They didn't understand what was going on. I'm willing to communicate my rationale. I'm willing to communicate how we arrived at our decisions. And in terms of trust for the administration, you know, that is something that is earned over time and through continued communication and delivery on the promises that were made, and the promises in terms of leading the district and the goals that we've set for the district and for a variety of things and not just one issue. So really, it's communicating, listening, and understanding what people's needs are and telling them whether they will or will not get their way, but also telling them why and how it fits into the broader picture.
Thank you. Mr. Polk?
Well, I believe that there was trust loss through those last issues. And I truly believe that if the board would have hired an independent investigator to go through that situation, to not have any biases, to not have any preconceived things where it's not so personal, I believe that the trust may have stayed. Whether that decision was the same or whether it was not based on that other independent person, that's not for me to say. But I believe truly that if we would have allowed to have an outsider come and look at the situation, distinguish what was real, what was not real, and to give their opinion on things, trust could have been preserved, because I believe that a lot of families in Richfield may have lost trust based on that decision, because I believe that they felt that that opinion didn't matter at all. felt that that opinion didn't matter at all.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
I think continuing with the transparency in our work as a district, really listening to the community when they have questions or concerns and bring them forward to us, and partnering with the community to make improvements, you know, a board of six people doesn't know, do not know the answer to everything. So we do need to partner with our community and work together. Unfortunately, when allegations are brought against an individual in a district, there are some things that legally we are not allowed to say as a board. And I think that was frustrating for all of us because we do question and look for the right answers. So, I think, I understand your question about, you know, an independent investigation, but we can't necessarily say everything that, that is happening. And I think we've taken steps to improve this in our public comment policy.
Thank you. Next question. A key element of the world's best workforce is stakeholder engagement. How do you currently engage families of color in the school district's policies? And the first one is Ms. Mala.
I think in our, I mean, so I think our work as a district in providing the innocent classroom training really does work to engage the diversity of the families in our district. I think we do as a board and just as individuals, we talk specifically to people in the community, we work with our administration, and we talk to students in the schools. I think the work with Reimagine Minnesota, I attended some, an event with them last spring and I think bringing our student voice into that is one of the key ways to engage all of the stakeholders.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Sue, can you repeat the question?
It says, "A key element of the world's best workforce is stakeholder engagement. How do you currently engage families of color in the school district's policies?"
I don't know that I have an answer to that, actually. I guess I can't answer it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Polk?
I, I think just understanding that the different cultures, different demographics of people in our community may do things a little bit differently. Not everybody can make a Monday or Tuesday night at seven and then, you know, request a month ahead of time to speak. That, that just doesn't work for some people. I think the best way is to openly listen and to understand and to want to understand what people are thinking and what people are understanding. I think also in order to want to really incorporate the different demographic of families, they need to feel wanted and they need to feel needed inside of Richfield Public Schools. You know, the demographics of our community should be equally represented throughout our district. And if that was the case, I feel like we would have a lot more engagement and a lot more conversation.
Mr. Tensing?
So, we certainly do need to continue our efforts to bring all of our families into the process. We have put forward several efforts in this regard and we probably need to put more energy into them. The Latino Family Association is one example of an effort that the district has put forward to bring diverse voices into our policy and procedure so that at the very least, our Latino families can understand the processes and can have an opportunity to provide input. It is also true that we have reform, are in the process of rewriting our policy on public comment and that also will allow for more participation.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
Pretty much a repeat of what others have said, you know, we've, we have worked to engage different constituencies and get them actively engaged in the district. Peter had mentioned the Latino Family Association, which I believe started a year or two ago, two years ago, as an opportunity for Latino families to, to bring up, how many, Peter?
Five.
Five, okay, thank you. My mistake. You know, and we've also tried to expand the participation in district committees with varying successes, but we just have to keep doing the work. If there are, you know, we have 4,400 students, we have families for 4,400 students, all of whom are invested in care in it. And as long, you know, we stay open and we are interested and I am personally interested in seeing, in hearing all of their viewpoints. And we will just have to keep working until we find the pathway to, to engage in, engage with them and have them participate at the levels at which they represent within our district.
Thank you. Next question. What opportunities do you see for a greater collaboration between our school board and city council? And Ms. Barnes, you are number one on that one.
I think it would be great for the school and the city to work together because I think that's how, as a community, if our schools fail, the city is going to fail. So, we need to get a conversation between the city council and the school board, even though there's only six on the board. The two need to get together and start having a conversation. Thank you.
And Mr. Polk?
Yeah, I, I believe the school board and the, and the city council, they share constituents. So, the relationship, I believe, should already be forged and should already be created and I think that it should already be something that is a must, that needs to be addressed and/or increase that relationship. You know, the, the two have common goals and are going to have common issues or obstacles in order to do what they want to do to make Richfield prosper. And I think a joint collaboration and working together is only going to enhance that ability to do so.
Mr. Polis?
Some of the, some of the ways we've, we've worked with the city in the past and, and the board likely will continue is, you know, one of the most obvious where, places where we overlap is in housing policy. If we as a district did not have any surprises in terms of, you know, for example, there, there was an apartment complex that changed ownership, we were kind of surprised by it and it affected us in that a number of students were displaced in the process. So that if we can collaborate on, on things like that so that we aren't surprised, so that we can actually plan for it, it would be most helpful in terms of stability in the immediate timeframe. Long-term, making sure that we have a coherent plan for development so that our city, you know, remains attractive to newcomers and for people to stay.
Ms. Malick?
I think very recently, we've actually increased our communication with the city council. We increased our number of study sessions from once a year to four times a year, so we will be meeting with them more regularly. As the school board chair, I've reached out and worked with the mayor directly. We've had multiple conversations about working together, the, the district and the city. We have a city council liaison, Maria Rigg and Gonzalez, who is kind of our line of communication to the city council. And in our last study session, they requested to have one of us be a liaison to them and I volunteered for that role. So I do agree that it's really important to have that connection. Thank you.
Mr. Tensing?
So as Ms. Malick has pointed out, there are efforts underway to increase the opportunities for communication bilaterally between the city council and the school board. And I think these are outstanding efforts, which I am wholeheartedly supportive of. I think that we certainly have opportunities to work together in the area of housing and I think we have actually experienced some positive outcomes in terms of working together in the area of, of housing for our students. We also have opportunities to potentially work together in the area of facilities and to just simply look for areas where there's synergy between what the city is doing and what the schools are doing with our facilities so that we can partner with facilities and get the most out of those dollars.
Thank you. Our next question. Is our fund balance sufficient? How would you grow the fund balance or use it to increase financial stability in our district? And Mr. Polis?
So our fund balance is the amount of money we have left over to, that, that we just leave in our savings to help us with cash shortfalls or other funding changes. For example, if the state holds back some of our money. Our fund balance is, is about 4.4% of our overall annual budget, four and a half percent roughly. Two, three years ago, it was, it was in the mid-twos, the, the board had, had reduced it. Even from mid-twos to four, it's with, mid-four, it's within our range for what board policy is, but it still rates one of the lowest within the state. I would like to see it higher personally, but the way to do it is to do it very slowly because every dollar we hold, we put into the fund balance is one we're not putting into programming. And I'd mentioned earlier, the competitive market we're in. If we, if we just grew the fund balance as our main goal, it would affect programming. So, I would like to see it grow. I would like to see it grow carefully.
Thank you. Mr. Tensing?
So, growing the fund balance is a priority for me as well. We have engaged with our fiscal planning advisory committee to sort of determine, well, where should the fund balance be? We have a longstanding policy of setting a fund balance between four and eight percent, but even within that range, that's a difference of several million dollars between the top and the bottom. And that's, those are real dollars that can have real impacts depending upon where you aim for. We do need to grow our fund balance to enhance our long-term fiscal stability. We do need to do it carefully and purposefully. We can't do it overnight. It needs to be a long-term priority and this will be dependent upon boards committing to that priority because if we, if we do it too fast, then obviously that'll come at the cost of programming and we can't afford to sacrifice that.
Ms. Malick?
So, I agree, the fund balance is a really important thing. When we first came on the board, it was at 2% and we've slowly increased it. It's now at about 4.4%. Making that, having that increase also allowed us to improve our credit rating, which means our interest rates will be lower and that is a positive thing for our district. I do agree, it needs to be a very gradual increase. We don't want to increase it and in the process compromise the education that our current students are receiving. So it's a balance. I think having a solid fund balance also allows us to, or prevents us from having to ta, do short-term borrowing and pay interest so more of our money is going directly to our students.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Well, I have the disadvantage of not being on the board, so I'm not very knowledgeable about the fund balance, but having attended the last couple board meetings, I think our board members are doing an excellent job for the district. And I think it's amazing that they've gone from 2% to 4.4. Thank you.
Mr. Polk?
Yeah, I would just echo what Ms. Barnes says. I think not having a real understanding from being able to hands-on work with that kind of a situation or discuss those type of things leaves me to not really have too much of a solid statement as far as that question goes. From the little bit that I do know and from the answers that I had just heard, I think it's pretty imperative that the, the cause and effect of that, taking money away from different programs and/or teachers and/or the students compared to saving the money for a rainy day, I think that's a very tight rope. So I'm hoping that, that's done in a very fiscally responsible way.
Thank you. Next question. Do you interact with parents and students? If yes, how often and in what manner? And Mr. Polk?
One more time, please?
The question is, "Do you interact with parents and students? If yes, how often, and I think maybe it means in what manner or matter."
Sure. I, I definitely interact with students every day. There's a lot of students that attend our public schools now and that have recently graduated from our public schools that still reach out to me each and every day, matter of fact. Later on in this campaign, I'm going to share a lot of letters that different students have written for me to share with you guys, things of that nature. So yes, I, I speak with a lot of students every day because, just for that little bit of time that I was there, to me, the importance is building that relationship. I think once you build that trust and you build that relationship with somebody, it goes beyond just that professional, you're there for the eight hours a day, making sure people are aligned and doing what they need to do. You're truly looking out for somebody, you're showing compassion with those people. So each and every day, yes, I do speak with students, former students and their parents.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Barnes?
The question was students and parents, correct?
Yes.
I have spoken with numerous new neighbors that have moved onto our block that actually moved, one family moved from Shakopee to Bryant to send their kids to Richfield Schools. And I have spoken with them, they're a family with young children. So I try to speak to anybody in the community. My husband gets annoyed with me when I'm talking to people in Cub or Rainbow, but I do speak to the parents and children oftentimes.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
I do, I've, you know, assuming my, my house key works when I get home, I will speak to one of each earlier, later today. But, you know, I've, I have the good fortune of having, having kids in the district and kids who are very active in a number of activities. And so by following them to their various activities and being engaged in, in them, whether it's coaching or cheering for teams or things like that, or Lego League, I've met a number of parents and a number of students and, and, you know, I'm not to knock the parents, but the best part of those interactions is, is the ones with the students. Really the best opportunities I've had are just coaching the kids and being around them and hearing what makes them tick and hearing what they want. So, I find, I, I try to put myself out there for anyone to talk to. I, I, I flatter myself by saying I'm approachable, but if nothing else, I'm willing to talk to people and I, and I think I've made good on that.
Mr. Tensing?
So, also having the advantage of having four children that are in the schools currently, that sort of a built-in opportunity to interact with other parents and, and other students just through the activities that your kids are involved in and the opportunity to be in the schools. As board members, we do need to be intentional, not only about being available, but also about reaching out and being proactive. And I've taken that, efforts to proactively reach out, be present at events, be present and open and ready to listen when there are concerns that are brought forward and to, to reach out for opportunities to engage with the parents and students.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
I guess I would echo similar, similar experiences with two kids in the district, one who just graduated. That does provide a lot of opportunity in their activities. So whether it's with the marching band or the Alpine Ski Team or whatever event, ever events my kids are participating in, you get to talk, you get to spend a lot of time talking to parents and you get to experience kind of your kids' friends. And sitting on the sidelines for sporting events provides a lot of opportunity for listening and hearing what is happening and other people's experiences are in the district. I also, we also participate in district committees, so we meet different parents that are involved on those district committees and just general volunteering in the schools. And then we are really, our information is available on the website and we do respond to all kind of requests for information or discussion.
Next question. What can be done to prepare students for careers that don't involve a four-year college degree? And Mr. Tensing?
So, career and technical education, I think, is very important and it's something that we need to be intentional about providing those opportunities to students within our district. It is true, I think, that there is a major emphasis on four-year college and that might be a little bit overemphasized right now. At the same time, we have an opportunity with our capital referendum that's moving forward to maybe bring back some of the outstanding career and tech ed opportunities that had formerly existed at our high school. And so we've, we've actually got space there at the high school that could be utilized to, to push ahead on career and tech ed, partnering with Hennepin County Tech as well.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
You know, so one of the, one of the goals is that our graduates of, of the system are career and college-ready. College, if I, I would broaden college beyond just a four-year college degree, but there's all, you know, there's two-year degrees and there's also any technical training that, that someone might need. Really, if you view college as, or, or any post-high school opportunity for learning, there is not a career out there that, that lacks that. So, our goal is to have all of our graduates prepared for the training and learning they will need to do for whatever career they happen to choose. With the seven-period day now at the high school, we do have an opportunity to provide electives that we have not historically provided if, if student demand creates it. And we will hopefully also have the flexibility to provide it with, with more limited numbers of res- of respondents or interest in it than we have historically.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes.
I'm actually a graduate of Anoka Technical, so I support technical schools. I believe the high school has a commitment with Normandale College. And if we could get maybe more students involved in things like car mechanics, Brick Lane, I mean, there's a lot of jobs out there that they can earn a lot of money, electricians, that they don't need to go to a four-year school. Thank you.
Mr. Polk.
One more time? I'm sorry.
The question, what can be done to prepare students for careers that don't involve a four-year college degree?
I think a lot can be done. I think a lot of the school itself is geared towards getting you ready for the next chapter. I think we presume that that next chapter, a lot of the times, will be going on to a four-year school, a two-year school, what have you. And for a lot of people, that's the dream and that's the goal. For a lot of people, that's not. And for some of those people, I feel like we could be teaching them a little bit more of life skill-oriented things, whether that's finance or personal finance and checking or just giving them the understanding of the career paths that are out there that you can obtain without going to those schools. Time is up. Thank you. We need two minutes, three minutes. Yeah. Quick thing, quick thing.
And, I'm sorry. Ms. Malick.
Thank you. It's actually part of our strategic plan to work on providing an environment where the trades are valued also along with plans to go to a four-year or two-year college. And we have a partnership with Hennepin Technical College, and I think that's very valuable. We've found that finding teachers who can come in and teach these things right in our schools are a big challenge because of how much more money they can make in the field. So it's really hard to get someone to come in and work as a teacher in that when they can make three to four times that, I don't know, a lot more money if they're out in the field. And we also have our RSEP partnership with Normandale. So I think continuing that work and also the work with Hennepin Technical College and really getting that information out to the students.
Thank you. All right. What can the school board do to better engage the community? And Mary, Ms. Barnes?
That's a great question. What can the school board do to better engage the community? Maybe, my suggestion would be to try to get more of the community members to attend the school board meetings. Back in the old days before cable television, the legal women voters always went to the school board meetings. And not quite sure how we can get that to happen again, but that would be my suggestion.
Ms. Malick.
So I think we do some work in this area, surveying, so trying to get information from the community about their perception of the schools and what's happening in our, in our district. I think really kind of trying to get more information about there, about what the opportunities are, whether it's participating on a district committee. I think we've done a better job of getting that information out about the district committees that we have and helping people kind of find the thing that get, that they're passionate about. So if it's curriculum, if it's finances, there are multiple opportunities and we are working to, to bring people into that. But I think it's helping people find the thing that they're passionate about in education that they can help us with.
Mr. Tensing.
So I think that the most precious thing that anybody has is their time. And we do need to find ways that can engage community members that doesn't require them to set aside two to three hours on a Monday evening every other Monday. Those ways would include having more transparency on the district website in terms of not only board policies, but translating those board policies from the sort of legalistic language into language that's going to be more accessible. So that member, so that members of the community, if they are wondering about something that's happening in the schools, they can find out quickly what the policies are on that. Second thing is we need to up our work, which has been spearheaded by Ms. Malick and Ms. Brackey on open involvement in board meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Paulus.
To engage with the community, I guess it's, it's, some of it is, is, is a willingness to, to, we have to present to the community, we have a willingness to listen, we have a lis- a willingness to hear and not just good news. I'm perfectly happy to hear all, all of my shortcomings on a daily basis. And so I do value those opinions, I do value those conversations, and I think that the board and the administration should be and is, frankly, is open to that. But to commu- continue to communicate it, we're willing to hear, we're willing to listen and, and also share opportunities with the people who come to us, what their, you know, tell them what their opportunities are to participate in the process, to give their opinions or share their energy and ideas with us. Really, I, it's, we, we are, we are a service of the people and so we would like more people to participate in it and I hope they know that.
Thank you. Mr. Polk.
Yeah, I think there's a lot that the board can do as, as a group and as individuals. Just to better understand the community, I think it, it's going to take something where you just have to step outside your comfort zone. You have to go hear people's wants, people's needs, people's concerns in situations and different areas than we may be used to. As we said before, maybe we're struggling with getting people to the school board meetings. Well, then let's find a different way. Let, let's find the solution rather than, you know, discuss the issues that we're having. Let's go to people, let's have listening sessions. Let's, let's reserve the library and have people come and we don't talk, we just listen to hear. Because that's what people want, is they want to know that we're here to listen rather than to direct them.
Thank you. A community complaint of the board was an, has been an antiquated and ineffective process for speaking at meetings and how dry meetings are. Do you have any ideas of how to improve board meetings? Mr. Polk.
One more time?
Do you want me to repeat it?
If you could.
Okay. A community complaint of the board has been antiquated and ineffective process for speaking at meetings and how dry meetings are. Do you have any ideas of how to improve board meetings?
Sure. I've only been to a few board meetings, those definitely weren't dry. I think one way too is just to get better community involvement. If there's people that want to come talk, we need to, whether that's get them transportation, whether that's schedule different times for, to make it convenient for them. Somehow, some way, we need better involvement and we need to hear from other people in the community. I think that would definitely loosen up the dryness of possibly having to be in a room where there's, there's not many people there wanting or desiring to listen to those type of things. But I think just sparring a better discussion and having those sessions where people are able to, to talk, we listen, whether we go back or not go back.
Thank you.
Just being able to listen.
Thank you. Ms. Malick.
So in reading our public comment policy and then going and looking at the MSBA policy, I, I completely agree. It was definitely lacking in opportunity and clarity. And I think we are, we have been working and, I mean, so much so that we have been, it's taken us a couple of months now to work our way through that. And so that is something we're still working on and haven't come to a final conclusion on, but the goal definitely was to make it more accessible and more obvious and simple what needs to be done if you would like to address the board. As far as the dry board meetings, some of the things that we have to do and look at and decide on are not very exciting to the general public. But I agree, I think listening sessions would be a way to, to bring people in in kind of the less formal board situation.
Mr. Tensing.
So again, credit where credit is due, Ms. Malick and Ms. Brackey, I think, provided a lot of the energy behind reforming our process for community engagement within board meetings. And I think the policy that we're working on is going to be a good one, that will offer multiple pathways and multiple opportunities for folks to get engaged in different ways with the work of the board. And so I would encourage anyone who wants to participate in that, come see what we're doing with Board Policy 206. It is true that there, you know, we are obligated statutorily to address certain issues that are not very exciting. And so there's always going to be lots of numbers, lots of spreadsheets, lots of talk about tax and levies. I don't know if there's any way to make that sexy.
Thank you.
We'll see.
Ms. Barnes.
Well, I've only attended the two meetings and they weren't dry. I said it was a toss-up between karaoke and the board meeting and they told me to go to karaoke. I did not find the meetings boring and maybe it's just me. As a school board, and I mentioned this to the superintendent, they really have a lot of fun. They're a fun group. Thank you.
And Mr. Paulus.
I, I think most of it's been said. We, the, the existing board has been working to improve the opportunity for the public to speak during meetings by changing policy. And that's, you know, that's one of the things that comes up. We have a number of policies that get reviewed in a five-year cycle. And until a problem presents itself or an issue presents itself, not so much a problem, you know, we don't necessarily assume that they're all wrong. So we have a five-year review cycle. This is one we're reviewing out of cycle to, to address a concern that was raised. And I think that's, again, good on Christine and Crystal for, for doing so. The material often is dry. You have to have a certain mindset to really enjoy the entirety of our board meetings. I'll be fully honest, I don't enjoy all of it myself, some of it is awfully dry. So that said, the, the work, having a, a mindset, knowing that the, what we're talking, no matter how dry, is relevant to the kids in the community. That reminds me that it's important, so.
Thank you. I'm going to combine two questions here, so if you want to write your notes. The first one is, please talk about the ways the school district can be transparent in the decision-making process. And the second one is, what do you mean when you use the word transparency? And Ms. Malick is first on this one.
How did I know I was going to get to be first on that? So I'll start with, I think what we mean by transparency is that, what I mean, I think, is that people can look at it and figure out some of our thought process and how we have come to decisions and why decisions are made. I think that really speaks to part of our, the challenges in communication. So I think they're combined together. What can we do to make our decision, our, to make it more transparent? I think one of the things that we do is ask a lot of questions. And I think sometimes those questions come in the form of emails before a meeting. We get a board packet, there's a lot of information about things we have to make decisions on and we email the questions to the administration that can help us answer that. One of the things that we've tried to do more often is bring those questions in the board meeting or even if we have had them answered in advance, asking them again so that they're publicly shared.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes.
Well, again, I have the disadvantage of not being on the board, but having attended a couple of meetings. I think our current board members really do ask a lot of questions, which I'm really impressed about. I think they're very thoughtful, they're very committed. And I think it'd be an honor to be on the board, but I think the current members are, are excellent.
Thank you. Mr. Polk.
Ways the district can be transparent in their decision-making, was that the question? Yeah, I believe the same as what has kind of been said before, just explaining the decision process, whether that's allowing the general public to, to hear that, whether that's to show them your, your, as a board, your pros and cons to whatever decision you're making and/or your individual pros and cons prior to you voting, whatever you're voting for. But I think mainly is just to have a better understanding and allow people to understand it in ways that we may not have thought of presenting that material. I think there may be families and/or people in the community that may not want to reach out to understand those things because maybe the way that we're presenting the material, they can't understand it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Paulus.
So on the part of the question, what I view transparency as sharing what my thinking is, how I arrived at a decision, and if there is an action, what the, the action likely will be. And if there are known outcomes of that action, sharing it when I can. You know, it's been mentioned, the board, the board meetings could be dry. That said, we do ask a lot of questions, or the board usually does. And many of them have been asked or addressed to the administration prior to the meeting. So in the interest of transparency, sometimes I try to ask questions I already know the answer to, just to make sure that the, the public is aware, is made aware, if they watch our, our YouTube video, that, that thoughts and questions have been asked. And I think our board has done a fair job of asking such questions and getting them on record publicly. I try to share more of my individual thoughts on my own, in, through my own ways. And, and I'm happy to answer and address any questions people have relating to them.
Thank you. Mr. Tensing.
So just echoing some of the statements that have been made, I think, I think it probably is true that if, if a community member had set aside the time to come and sit in on our board meetings, they could have enjoyed all of the transparency that exists in that setting. However, I think it's also, the fact that the question is being asked shows us that the expectation that folks are going to set aside the time to, to attend board meetings is not a realistic expectation. We're not, we're not meeting the needs of our community by asking them to come and be present. So what we need to do is to have more accessibility through our website, in language, on our policies and agendas and minutes that is accessible.
Thank you. Last question, or last general question, I think. What is Richfield, what are Richfield Public Schools doing to attract and retain teachers of color? And Mr. Tensing.
So Richfield Public Schools is working hard to attract and retain teachers of color. I'm sure that the superintendent and our human resources people have been quite intentional about reforming our hiring process so that we're getting out there sooner and that we are having more student teachers. We're really trying to get, get a leg up on the competition to, to attract and retain those teachers. It is a very competitive environment to get teachers of color. All districts have a deficit and all districts are going to be working hard to bring those people in. The way that Richfield will succeed, our structural advantage is the fact that we have a very diverse community and a very diverse student body. And so we need to invest more resources in growing our own teachers out of our current diverse pool of students.
Mr. Paulus.
You know, so attracting and retaining, you know, we, we have only so many bites at the apple each year, right? So we can only, there's only so much turnover that happens in a given year. Peter had mentioned that there's, there have been some strategic changes in how we, we go out and recruit teachers earlier in the, in the hiring cycle than we did prior to the current administration. And so that is a net plus for the district. In that timeframe, our, our teachers of color, you know, it had been mentioned earlier, we're at about eight percent of our teachers are people of color. That's versus statewide average of four percent. Those numbers are disappointingly low and I will agree with that and there is a need for us. But as Peter said, there is a need for every district to do this. Our advantage, as Peter said, is that we are in fact a diverse community. We are certainly open and, and wanting to attract more people of color to, to work within our district. Where we are able to be more nimble as in administrative roles and we have roughly thirty percent of our administrative staff are people of color. And we hope that that leadership signals to people that we are serious about attracting and retaining more people of color.
Mr. Polk.
I guess my answer would be, I, I'm not sure. Without really having any information as far as human resources and recruiting strategies, my answer would be, I'm not sure. From working in the school last year, I believe roughly forty-some percent of our high school demographic last year was Hispanic. I believe we had zero full-time teaching staff that were Hispanic. Of the twenty-some percent African-American in the high school, there was one African-American. Of the twenty-some percent African-American in the high school, there was one African-American full-time teacher. I'm not sure what we're doing. I do know that once we can achieve a better ratio, once we can find a way to attract those people, our environment will prosper and be a lot better than it is.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
So I would echo some of the things that have already been said, are changes in our hiring policies and getting out there early and trying to get access to those applicants, and also that it is very competitive. We also have exceptional need in our Richfield dual-language program since we need Spanish-speaking teachers there. Some of the people that we do hire end up in that school as opposed to spread throughout the district. I think something we could consider is kind of something mentioned earlier in other areas, but kind of growing our own. So when we have students of color leaving our district that are graduating from our district that then want to go on and become teachers, kind of providing an environment for them to come back to that would make them want to come back and be teachers in the schools where they graduated from.
Ms. Barnes?
I don't have one-hundred percent knowledge of that question, since I'm not on the board. But after spending some time at the high school the other day, there are employees there of color that have graduated from Richfield and are now employed. I believe the lady that I spoke to in the lunchroom that speaks Spanish, she told me she was the only Spanish-speaking employee. I think on the whole, as a district, I think we have a lot of very caring employees, and I think that would draw a lot of students to become employees.
Okay. I believe we have time for one more question and then our final comments. In the event the levies do not pass, what do you think the biggest challenge will be and how would you overcome it? Mr. Polis?
In the event the levies don't pass, you know, for one, the capital improvements won't occur, and so we'll just be, the district will be left to, in a waiting game, wondering what urgent needs, if they're structural or mechanical, that will fail eventually, because things don't work forever. The district will just be left in a precarious spot in that we have aging buildings and haven't addressed them, so there's that. In terms of the operating levy, what we would do is we would continue doing the good work that we're doing now, albeit with significantly fewer resources and in specifics, and then also specifically in relation to our neighboring districts who we compete against. And so in the event one or both don't pass, we will be left in a competitive, a position of competitive disadvantage to our neighboring districts. So that troubles me.
Mr. Tensing?
So as a school district, as a local unit of government, we have only certain ways that we can raise revenue. We can try to lobby our legislators to push the general fund. That's a limited effort that is available to us, because a legislator from Farmington may not really care so much what a board member from Richfield thinks about the general fund. We can go to our taxpayers and ask for referenda dollars, or we can use board authority, which is also quite constrained by the state. So really, the only mechanism that is available to the schools to increase our funding is by going to the voters. If we fail to pass these levies, we will need to go again.
Thank you. Ms. Malick?
I guess I would have to repeat kind of the same thing that everyone else has said. If we aren't able to complete this building maintenance with this, with this capital levy, then things will kind of be at a standstill. We'll have to slowly chip away at it. I would expect some of the work that was required would have to come on some level out of operating funds. But if the operating levy doesn't pass either, I think we have to then look at kind of the same things that we have been doing, trying to bring money in through grants and things like that. But we already do all of that work. I feel like we have kind of chipped away at the cuts and sort of the low-hanging fruit, the things that you can get rid of. And right now, it comes down to eighty percent of our money is towards staff, and that's really all that there's left at that point to cut if we don't have some increase in dollars.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Well, I agree with the other comments. If they don't pass, there won't be any building maintenance. I believe there was also some talk of some more security measures in our schools, which in today's age, I think are very important. I think as a district, we need to make sure that the referendums pass. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now go to, oh, I'm sorry, I missed. Mr. Polk, go ahead.
Thank you. I definitely hope that the referendums pass. I think to stay competitive, like everybody has said, those dollars need to be used in a fashion that will give us that upper hand. I don't believe, though, that we need to look at the referendum as the end-all, be-all, that once we get this financial backing, that our district is then in that place where we need to just let status quo remain. Utilizing that money obviously would be fortunate for the children. If we do not get that resolved and passed, I think we need to just find ways to continue what's going on and to maybe look for different ways that we haven't looked for in the past, whether that's look for Spanish-speaking volunteers in the community to come help with students in the classroom, whether that's to help them translate, whether that's to help with homework, just finding different ways to do things with us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and now it's time for the final comments from each candidate, and Ms. Malick is first.
So thank you again to the League of Women Voters for providing this opportunity for all of us. I have really enjoyed my past four years serving on the board. I've been inspired by the commitment of my fellow board members, all who value the thoughts, experiences, and perspectives of each other and of Richfield Public Schools' parents and community. I would like to continue my work on the board, and I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polk?
Sure. Again, thank you for hosting this this morning. Just to outro, throughout my life, I've worked with youth in a variety of capacities and believe I'm uniquely qualified to serve on the Richfield School Board. Over the last five years, I've held positions as a football and basketball coach at the high school, a youth basketball referee, a Richfield School Security Officer, and a police officer. In addition to providing mentorship and guidance for local youth, these experiences share one crucial component, and that's giving back to our community. And it's only through direct involvement that one can truly get a sense of his or her environment and become a champion of its betterment. And given this opportunity, I know that I'll not only be a great benefit to the school board, but to the city of Richfield as a whole. I'm running for school board, I want to be the voice of the voiceless in our community. I want to represent our unrepresented population of our community. And I believe that we need mentors and role models to do that. And I want to be that for not only the students through all of our schools, but for our staff, our janitorial staff, our bus drivers, and everybody in the district.
Thank you. Ms. Barnes?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters. I know I'm not your traditional school board candidate. What I've been doing in my spare time is trying to help my husband get his nineteen-fifty-four truck running, so I like to get my hands greasy. My resume states I'm hardworking, I'm honest. I've had numerous jobs, probably way too many jobs. My last nine years, I've been a waitress, so I'm willing to work hard. I think I would, as a grandmother, make an excellent school board candidate, because I don't have children in the district, I just have a granddaughter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polis?
Thank you. As I answered the questions earlier, you know, it's, a lot of them ask about things that I perceive as shortcomings within the district, and those aren't conversations I usually have publicly. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, while I am fully aware of the shortcomings of the district, many of them, and I have ideas and plans for how they would be addressed, I don't want, I don't want the highlight of my answers to suggest that I think things are in disrepair. On the contrary, we have tremendous staff, we have tremendous families, we have a great community, and I'm honored to have served it. You know, there are a number of things we have gained that are too numerous to list right now in terms of the things we've gained in the last four years through the leadership of the administration, the existing board that I'm honored to service up next to. I want to thank Nate and Mary for being here. I truly value the challenge that you guys represent and the demand to stay sharp, I really do. It's a signal that there is an interested and engaged community, and if they weren't here, I would be very concerned. So thank you for that. Thanks to the League of Women Voters. And I would just ask everyone, we have a one-minute answer, and that is a, I'm not knocking the format, that is a difficult thing to put your answers to full thoughts. Please, I advise everyone to contact the candidates and get full answers to these questions and not just let this one-minute snapshot be the be-all and end-all. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Tensing?
So thank you very much for the opportunity and for hosting this forum. My children have received an excellent education from Richfield Public Schools, and I have, my mission is, and my passion is about making sure that all children can receive the same excellent education that my children have received. And I think we've made good strides in that, in moving in that direction over the last four years, but I'm committed to seeing that work through to completion, and that's why I'm running for another term. The staff in Richfield Public Schools, we have outstanding people who are working very hard all the time. We have a caring community, and I think to Mr. Polis's comments, we are willing and ready and eager to listen to all the ways that we can do better. And I think that's why I'm running for board again. Thank you.
Thank you. And then now we'll hear a closing from our league president, Susan Rosenberg.
Well, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank everybody for coming. I really appreciate Superintendent Janowski's explanation of the referendums. And I really want to thank the candidates, because we respect and admire anyone who throws their hat in the ring like that. And I speak from personal experience, it takes a lot of guts. And I really appreciate you putting yourself out there, it really means a lot to us. And I want to just want to say something to the viewing public, what Mr. Polis said is correct, these are snapshot answers. And if you have more interest in finding out what's going on, give them a call, they'd love to talk to you. And so again, thanks everybody for coming, thanks to all the representatives and all the leaguers, and I guess that's all we're going to say for today. They told me to keep it brief, so they know I like, I get in front of a microphone, I can't stop.